Okay, roll call please.
Here.
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 Here. Okay, everybody's present and this is a rescheduled meeting. We were supposed to meet last week but due to the inclement weather we rescheduled that to this evening. So, let's take a look at the agenda. We have an educational presentation tonight on the Common Core program. Nothing really on the president's report. We have a plethora of student reps tonight which will be great. Superintendent's report, we'll open it up for public comment if anybody's here. The consent vote agenda was reviewed earlier in the month or late earlier last month and committee will approve that. Brief updates from program and personnel, facilities and finance. Anything from property Stephen?
No.
Okay. CEDOC?
I just worked.
Okay. A lot of activity in CEDOC these days I know. Illinois Association of School Boards?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. And then we will convene an executive session this evening but we will not be taking any action following that executive session. Okay? All right. Education presentation for tonight.
Start off the bang.
Good evening. I am really excited to introduce Paul Reeve, Department Supervisor at Libertyville High School, and Tara Niabas, Department Supervisor at Vernon Hills High School of English, both, to share with you how the English departments and really department schoolwide have been aligning curriculum to Common Core state standards and preparing for some changes down the road in assessment. Previously for discussion overall presented by John Gilliam and Ray Alvin about district-wide efforts to align to the Common Core, Paul and Tara are here tonight to give you a more specific view at the English department's efforts on literacy across the district.
Hi, everybody. Hi Grace, hope to get your reading done tonight.
Ouch. Secrets out.
All right, so as Rita mentioned, we would like to talk to you about how literacy is affecting us in our English departments and what we're doing with the Common Core state standards. So, we're looking at these goals and answering these questions for you. How has the English department here and the English department at Vernon Hills responded to the adoption of Common Core state standards? What are the plans for implementation moving forward? And then how have the Common Core state standards positively impacted the most important stakeholders, our students? So, if we're taking a look when the Common Core state standards were introduced to us in 2010, 2011, our teachers got a bird's eye view of the Common Core state standards. But in the English department, we were not really panicked because literacy is something that we just kind of do naturally. And so that word wasn't as scary to us. We already were teaching our students to read closely, teaching our students about argumentation, how to analytically look at a piece of writing, how to write analytically, and how to write in narrative form. So, for us, literacy and the Common Core state standards really made sense. We were all given notebooks at that time and then Paul and I were able to dive in a little more deeply and look at our standards and targets and how they aligned with Common Core state standards. And we were pretty comfortable with where we were and we're comfortable with where we are now. So here, we were fortunate enough to start PLCs in 2011 and 2012 and they have been integral in how we have attacked the Common Core state standards and how we have decided to move forward with making sure our students are successful. So, in our PLCs, we have been able to do many things with curriculum, assessment and instruction. And one of those things started here at Vernon Hills with our implementation of common exams in 2011, 2012. So, our teachers here were able to look at our exams and see what skills were important to our kids here as far as literacy and make sure that we were assessing those skills together as one course in our department. 2012, 2013, we both started getting into it a little bit more in depth and our teachers started to ask more questions because now everyone is talking about it. They're talking about the new PARC exam and we really wanted to make sure that our teachers knew what they were talking about and that they felt very confident. So, we started sending teachers to ROE workshops. We sent two groups to those workshops. We talked about it several times at department meetings. And then we also made sure that we had articulation with the middle schools so that we could see where our feeder schools were and where they needed to be and what we need to do in order to make sure that things went well for our students when they got here in conjunction with what they were doing at the middle schools. So again, our focus here was to make sure our teachers were confident and that they knew that we were confident in what we had already been doing and that they knew we were already doing what we need to be doing.
Could you just let ROE, PRC, could you just say what that means?
Yes. All right, so we have the PARC exam which is the for...
Assessment?
Never mind. Regional Office of Education.
There you go, are we? You got it, yes.
The PARC is going, the PARC is going, just for the audience, the PARC is going to replace the current per state achievement exam. And not only will we have an exam in Illinois, it will be a multi-state exam.
Thank you.
Is it regional then or...
Across the nation. So, there are two different groups. There's smarter balance, about 20, 21 states, and the rest of the states are PARC states. So, we are moving towards a more nationalized test around the Common Core.
Both of those focusing on college readiness and career readiness. So, the C and the C in PARC stand for college and career readiness.
That's a done deal?
Yes. Minute and 14:15.
Yeah, because we were talking about it on Monday.
We're piloting tests this year.
Ready? So, as you can see, this year we have been doing a whole heck of a lot. So, all of the steps from 2010 up to now has prepared us for this year. LHS has started to develop common exams aligned to Common Core state standards so that the two of us can work together and our departments can work together. And so, at Vernon Hills, we have started to revise those common exams and Paul and I are very excited that our department, our departments will be meeting as pilot groups so that we can start common assessments between our two schools. So, we can make sure that our students at Libertyville and at Vernon Hills are getting the same skills and that we are preparing the students for college and career readiness according to Common Core state standards. So, along these lines, we have also started here this year our literacy coaching. It has been in place at Libertyville for three years. And here, for example, this year we've had several half-day workshops for our teachers, some seminars, so that our teachers across the building can become very confident and familiar with literacy and how they're already doing it in their disciplines and how they can strengthen our literacy approach across our curriculums for both schools. We also here are going to be able to give the pilot exam for the PARC which will not be given until 2015, 2016. We are able to pilot it here for two of our classes at the freshman level so that we can see how our students respond to this new format and we can see how well our kids are prepared at this point and how they will do with taking the test here at Vernon Hills online. So, we'll be able to ask kids afterwards how that experience is, what more they think we can do to help them prepare and just have that overall experience. So, we're pretty excited about that. And then, as I mentioned, we will have our pilot teams meeting. We're going to be having our literacy team, our freshman co-taught and our American Lit co-taught, or I'm sorry, World Lit co-taught, teachers meet so that we can go through this process a little bit before the rest of our departments do. So, we can kind of figure out what those glitches are and we can see how well these common exams are working for our kids. And then, of course, we are still articulating with the middle schools, our feeder schools, to make sure that their common exams and our common exams don't overlap, that we see where our gaps are, that we see where we're working together and where we need to be more solid in our articulation and how we're preparing our kids as they come here.
So, the middle school, high school articulation topic is kind of interesting because one of the advantages to the Common Core has already been like in our articulation meetings, instead of talking about language arts stuff in general, it's really interesting how the Common Core is really getting us all sort of on the same page. Common Core does a nice job of scaffolding skills all the way from, you know, elementary school to middle school and into the high school. And another example of how the Common Core kind of helps the high school focus is even different disciplines, you know, different departments are talking about how can I better help kids with literacy or how can I help kids in writing? So, you know, the gym teachers coming to me and talking about how can we do this better? And although conversations like that have always taken place, it's been kind of, and I'm pretty excited about the Common Core and the way it really helps us all sort of say what are the standards and goals we're working towards. So, all right, and our presentation is called Yesterday, Today and Tomorrow. So, Tara kind of covered all the yesterday stuff and today's stuff and I'm going to kind of focus a little bit more on where we're going in the future. So, like Tara mentioned, this second semester, we'll have pilot teams coming together from the both buildings and talking about what assessments could we give in common at each building. And then next year, we'll continue that process. And in 2015, we're going to continue having teams meet and use those assessments and compare results and make sure we're really happy. It's sort of a fundamental part of teaching but it's also really difficult to design assessments that really match what you're teaching in the classroom and then using the results from that assessment to drive future instruction. So, this process is one that we're going to work on over the next two years so that we're pretty comfortable with the exams when they really count which is, and PARC rolls out which is in 2016. All right, so just let me make sure I didn't leave anything out that I wanted to mention with you or to you. Yeah, when PARC rolls out in 2016, 17, we feel we'll be in pretty good shape to have assessments that we're comfortable using at a district level.
How do the students, you have students coming through the pipeline and it sounds like you're trying to align all the teachers and your organization to teach, but how are the students as you transition, how are they faring through this pipeline? Because each year, it sounds like they're seeing something a little different for some period of time.
The last part there, I think the students feel, well, you know, we're just at the very beginning, but I hope students would feel that they see a clear direction and focus for things and, you know, things, you know, for instance, especially in the English class, right? It's like you have an eighth grade teacher and a freshman year teacher and a sophomore teacher and it seems like there's always different things your teachers are looking for and you kind of got to get to know your teacher and what they're emphasizing, what they really enjoy teaching. And I think the Common Core helps us kind of all agree on, look, we really want all the kids to be able to write a good argument each year, so let's make sure we're covering just that thing, argumentative writing, you know? Instead of maybe one teacher thinks it's really great and another teacher doesn't hit it as much. This way, we agree and we want to cover these certain skills. And then I think the students benefit because they see a logic and a pattern and a progression and a growth and with the kind of assessments we're talking about, we'll be able to more accurately measure, I think, the results of our efforts and students can see their growth. Am I answering your question?
Yes, and I see that as a great, at the end state, a student can be at the beginning of the pipeline and see the clear picture the whole way. It's the next several years through 16 that I just wonder about when each year you're tweaking it a little bit and the students, I thought I had a picture of the pipeline but now it's moving, it's just tweaking a little bit. And I don't know if this is a big concern or not, but it's just, to me, it says the students could be off kilter a little bit each year just in that transition time. And when you're done, I agree, it sounds like a nice vision to have and everybody moves forward.
Well, like Tara I think was saying in the beginning, for the English department, this wasn't a huge radical departure from what we've done all along. You know, the four standards deal with reading, writing, speaking, listening and language. And, I mean, that's what the language arts is all about. So, for us, it was more a shift in emphasis. Like I said, you know, for writing, they'll say have the kids write narratives, have the kids do literary analysis and have the kids write argumentation, you know? So, those kinds of things with a deliberate focus each year, I mean, it's a change but it's what an English, good English class does anyway. And it certainly aligns with things like you'd see on, you know, a college board, AP test, but also, you know, our classes, they try to help kids that struggle more. We focus on the same thing. So, it's maybe, I guess I'm trying to say, I don't think the students see a huge, whoa, this is a whole new world, you know? Because we're focusing more if anything on skills and less on reading certain works. So, I think for the students, they probably don't, they're not seeing a huge change.
One of the points about this and Common Core state standards is that students are required from elementary school through high school to read closely and to cite evidence from text. And so, you know, our students are very accustomed to making an argument where they're using evidence from the text that they're reading to make that argument. But the beauty of the standards now is that students are being asked to do that at a younger age. And so, we're developing this common language about how you make an argument and how you gather evidence from text. And so, having students start that earlier really supports what we've been doing in the high school for many years. And I think that's why it doesn't seem like a radical departure for our students because they're accustomed to those kinds of skills.
I think Paul, the last thing you said is the biggest change and that's a movement from content to skills.
Skills.
Because we're attached to our content and now that's just the vehicle for teaching the skills. And I think that's been a good thing too.
Yeah.
And there's a shift too in the kind of proportion of whether literature versus more technical reading and things like that, right?
Yeah, you're getting a little more into the specifics of the Common Core and that's fine.
Yeah, that's...
And I'd say that's another shift in emphasis has been a more deliberate, you know, teachers are being asked to pay more of a deliberate attention to nonfiction instead of literature. And in English class, yeah, we like the literature, you know? So, the Common Core is really forcing us to make sure we incorporate nonfiction. And I think we're doing that mostly with shorter works but also deliberately, yes, two novels, two works of nonfiction. And students, I think the experience I had has been just awesome. They really eat it up, you know? They like reading nonfiction quite often.
Yeah, one of the things we do in our classes is when we're reading a fiction text, we make sure that our article of the week, which is always nonfiction, has something to do with what we're reading as far as the literature piece. So, they can see a tie between it but we're, so it's not like we're shoving nonfiction because we're supposed to. We're making sure that it fits and that it makes sense. And, you know, I think that one of the things that we always talk about that we really value here is that we never have to quote "teach to the test" here. And like Maria said, it's a shift to the skills base, but we have never said to our kids, well, we had to make this change because this new test is coming or these new standards. We just always make sure that we have that goal in mind, that we want our kids to be successful and we teach them what they need. And we're not so much worried about what those test results are going to be because we're confident that we're doing what we need to be doing in our classes.
So, could I put the students on the spot and say, have you noticed your English teachers using a little more nonfiction in your summer reading or on an instructional basis kind of regularly?
Well, I have the best English teacher in town.
I don't recall you as being in any of my classes.
Do what you've got to do.
Do you remember starting articles of...
When you were in World Lit honors?
I do, I do remember, yeah. Yeah, there's nonfiction, I think it helps, like what you said, to see the technical side of English and it helps attack the literature side with a different perspective in a more concise way and not so. And the area of meaning is Utah US.
You're going to get extra credit for this tomorrow.
I hope so. I'm not going to get my reading done, it's just...
So, I don't know about you guys, I'm really having a blast talking about the Common Core. This is awesome, there's an audience that wants to hear what we have to say about this stuff. But we're passing out a handout that has a real condensed version of the Common Core standards just for reading and I'd like to direct your attention to the backside where it says reading skills framework. So, the English teachers got together, they looked over the Common Core and they sort of gleaned from the Common Core these seven reading skills. And this is a framework that Tara and I are kind of using to move forward with common assessments in reading. So, I'm just sharing this with you. So, you see it says like there's reading comprehension as a skill and making inferences. And then the teachers are looking at this and developing assessments that match these categories. And then on page three, there's the, again, a condensed version of the writing standards for grades nine to 12. And you see the three categories we've already touched on, argumentation, informative or explanatory writing. Oh, I'm sorry, these are just the writing standards in general. So, you have the writing for writing arguments, writing to explain, and then producing clear writing and drawing evidence. On the back, what I've given you is the writing prompts that we're mirroring as we design common assessments that ask kids to engage in a writing task. So, Tara and I just felt that instead of kind of talking about the core in general or vague terms, we wanted to give you some specifics. We have just a couple more slides talking about where we're going, we're almost done. So, Tara already mentioned that our main goal is always how is what we're doing benefits benefiting students? How is it increasing student achievement? These are some of the benefits we feel we're experiencing already. Tara mentioned the focus on literacy is building wide, not just kind of the job of the English department. Going back to your comment about nonfiction writing, this is something to come, of course, things should be happening in all classes. We've always worked well together and the teachers are happy to get together and work but there is an urgency or immediacy that the Common Core seems to be bringing us together in a, I don't know, more immediate way. We have a direct task and more stronger purpose now, I think, to work together and develop these things. And I already mentioned within buildings, I feel, is happening. And then improving curricular alignment coordination even within the department. And then, I just also feel it's been great for teachers to reflect on their instruction and assessment. And this last point, I just wanted to emphasize that I really think one of the great things about our department is we do give teachers a lot of freedom to act as professionals and do the things in the classroom that they think are going to best benefit kids. And the Common Core is very explicit about they don't want to dictate to teachers how to teach or exactly, you know, methods to use or works to take, but it is pretty clear about students should be developing certain skills, you know? So, I think we're very comfortable working with the core because it kind of matches our philosophy and I think the district's philosophy. The quote is, "The standards define what all students are expected to know and be able to do, not how teachers should teach." So, the standards articulate some fundamentals, but they don't try to give an exhaustive list or set of restrictions. So, we like that.
It's easier, is it an easier conversation to have with a teacher if I can say, what skills is your test aligned to as opposed to why are you testing on Macbeth? Or why did you choose to teach this? Or an easier conversation to me, for me to have in PLCs when I say, what skills are you going to be assessing using this text and this text and this text? So, the teachers know that they still have choice as long as they're focused on the skills. And so, it has certainly allowed for easier and stronger and stronger conversations.
As a result of reading Macbeth, what can you do now? And then just looking ahead, these are some of our challenges. We're still waiting for PARC to come out. We're doing our best to try to anticipate what this test is going to look like. And then I'd say another thing that we're dealing with is just teachers' questions and concerns. Talk about the change process. This is a change, you know, it's different. We're, we just spend a lot of time having conversations with teachers and making sure everybody's comfortable because we are kind of going into an unknown here, you know, not having really seen that the, exactly what this test is going to look like. But we do have the core that we're working towards. And then I think we have a lot of conversations about really using assessment to drive learning and to impact instruction. So, that's kind of, I say, what we're looking at too.
Any questions?
Yeah. In the age of STEM, do you feel like you're coming to the table and being representative, represented appropriately? You're at the root of all this. People can't do a thing with STEM if they can't articulate it. And I'm just wondering, I'm trying to make sure you don't feel like you're a stepchild these days or anything like that.
No, in fact, I think with our literacy coaching here, we have been able to show how literacy is integral to math and engineering and those areas so that those teachers understand how they can help their students become even more successful in, with STEM and STEM programs. And I think that the focus on that word, literacy, has helped us kind of expand. I don't, yeah.
So, STEM with science, technology, engineering and math, right? I mean, I think it, I don't feel threatened at all by that, like we're being pushed aside in any way. If anything, I think the language arts are valued even more as a result of, you know, recognizing that we need students to be engineers and scientists. I mean, I just feel the English department and language arts is being honestly valued even more as an integral part of those things. I think the Common Core even recognizes that, you know? Does that answer your question?
Good answer.
You're asking good questions.
There are actually studies that show schools and districts that focus on literacy show improvement in their math scores as well. So, you know, that's the basis of learning in any discipline.
And we talked about that in prior meetings, the whole thing about word problems and being able to articulate the issue and that was, I believe in math.
I mean, this is kind of anecdotal, but in the AP language class I'm teaching right now, I wasn't on the PLC a year ago though, and that team came together with a great summer reading list. And on the summer reading list, they decided we're only going to have nonfiction choices. And two of the books were outliers and Freakonomics. And I'd say half the class read those two books and loved them and were really engaged in, you know, this stuff that deals with economics and sociology. A couple of years ago, our summer reading list probably would have been classic literature that we weren't going to teach as part of the regular course. So, I know to me, that's kind of STEM and language arts intersecting.
That's great. I was just going, the PARC test, I mean, I know you haven't seen it, but is it going to be a multiple choice test? Is it going to be multiple choice and some short answer or we don't even know that yet?
We do know, there are test blueprints out there and we know that there will be a performance-based assessment that's about 70% through the school year in both ELA and math that will include selected response questions, multiple choice, and also open-ended free response questions. The end of your exam will be only selected response. So, some of the PARC assessment questions in ELA and in math are kind of involved investigations that require multi-steps and various sources to draw from in creating a response. So, they are a bit more complex than the ACT and require a bit more kind of deeper learning, evidence of deeper learning on the part of students.
And then depending on the result of those tests, we'll be able to feed that back into the instructional... the instructional curriculum and see where the gaps are?
Right.
And Rita, what's the, what's the difference in testing? Will we still only be testing juniors in Park?
Yes, as you know, Prentice, the big difference is that when Park is fully implemented, we'll be testing ninth, 10th, and 11th graders and showing growth from year to year. And as Paul and Tara mentioned, is the skills aligned from kindergarten through 12th grade. And so, the notion that you should be able to measure a student's progress from kindergarten throughout his educational career from year to year to show appropriate growth is what the whole testing system is based on.
And right, and right now, as you recall, forever in Illinois, we've tested juniors. And so, when we do compare, we try and do comparative analysis, we're comparing this year's seniors to this year's juniors. So, we don't have that data unless we have internal instruments in terms of doing that. So, we're going to have a lot more quantitative data to be able to take a look at to actually analyze and then prescribe and make adjustments, amplify what's working well and make adjustments where we need to work them. And as Rita said, the thought is we're going to be able to follow students from their elementary schools all the way through high school and be able to make prescriptive changes to assist them in becoming better students and higher achieving students and growing. So, from that standpoint, it's, it's really good. Jim, you wanted to say something?
Yeah. So, up until the point in time this takes, takes effect, we have the Prairie State that actually also includes the ACT as a component. So, will the ACT, it's not going to go away anytime soon, will that be just an additional test like it used to be? Or, will we offer that? I think there was some value to having that offered to all students so that everyone has that, that sort of assessment going into the college, you know, looking at colleges and whatnot. What's the plan for that?
Well, it's a very good question, and I know many of high schools like ours are hoping that the state will continue to support ACT. We do see the value in offering ACT to every student, especially because it is so important to their future college admissions. The state currently is describing ACT as a college admissions test and Park as a college placement test. And Chris Cook, the state superintendent, has recommended that the state continue to support ACT, but it will be a budgetary issue as, you know, we look to how does the state pay for Park and ACT for every student? And how do we balance the time spent on testing versus the goal of having students, having every student have an ACT available?
Yeah, the fear would be those that aren't necessarily thinking strongly about college will not take the time to take the ACT, whereas now, at least they have that in their pocket and they may decide, you know, maybe college isn't so bad and they can move on to, and they have that rather than, because that's such an important part for the admissions process.
Well, and I think the other issue with ACT, this is a really contentious question right now. And we've had many internal discussions. We've had discussions among the superintendents. Rita is in the CADCA group for us, which is virtually every public school district in the Chicago area from far south to far north. And I would say our position on this is the state has invested a tremendous amount of time and money and effort in providing ACT test to every junior during the week as part of the testing process, not on a Saturday morning when they can elect to come or not come. And that's been a good thing for the state of Illinois. I think currently we're still second in the United States in terms of our composite ACT score, and that's with all of our juniors taking the ACT test. So, we have seen a rise, dramatic rise in ACT scores. And if you look in our own district and our jumps in ACT scores over the years, that's been a linchpin in that. So, I think what we're all advising the state superintendent is to leave it in, which he has, but we have a line item budget in Illinois. And that's going to be part of additional revenue that they are looking for in the education budget in a state that is conservatively $13 billion in debt. So, whether that will survive, the budget process that will start here very quickly with the governor's budget address in February is going to be an unknown. I'll be in Springfield tomorrow, actually, meeting with the four house leaders. And one of the people we, a small group of superintendents, and one of the people we will be meeting with while we're down there is Chris Cook. And we are going to, we're going to push him on several things. ACT is one of them. Going to Ellen's earlier comment, there's a lot of concern and angst in the state right now about whether the infrastructure is even available downstate in southern Illinois, the bandwidth available to even do the electronic testing. That's very problematic for them. As you move further north in the state where we may have the bandwidth, it's very problematic for local districts to come up with the amount of technology and to integrate that technology that they'll need to do the testing. The state, of course, has very little, if no money, to support that. So, that's one of the, I think I can use the word scary. That's one of the scary things, I think, for educators as we move forward in this. We're going to learn some and we do the piloting of the test across the state in the spring. But remember, that's going to be small groups of students. It's not going to be the freshman, sophomore, and junior class at Vernon Hills High School taking the test. Now, our tech people have been working for a year and a half to make sure that we have bandwidth and so that we can work on having the technology to be able to take this test. But we don't live where most people live in that regard. The other thing that's problematic right now, I think with the whole testing array, is what happens if we roll this out and it's a disaster? Or, it's really sloppy? And the likelihood of that happening is, we know from several other large rollouts and many of, we've all kind of witnessed the big rollout of the healthcare on the federal level, we know what happens with big government rollouts. They're often sloppy. And I think the position of Dr. Cook's position and the position of the state board right now is, yes, it's going to be sloppy, yes, it's going to be uneven, we need to get this going, and we will, over the next two or three years, we'll work our way through this and we'll figure it out. Unless we hear something different in the next few weeks, the pilot tests are going to be upon us. And once we start that process, we are not going to back up and go a different direction. That timeline might be adjusted, but as we've seen over the last two or three years, timelines have not been adjusted for these large rollouts. So, we're going to do the best job we can to be prepared, have our students prepared for this, but we're also going to try and have the best preparation possible for actually articulating the test itself when we get it. The one advantage is we're going to get much quicker feedback than we do with PSAE where we wait for two or three months sometimes to get the results back. And again, we're comparing apples to oranges. The last thing we all want to make sure that we thank the board for is when our folks are talking about PLCs, they're talking about professional learning communities. I know that's not new vernacular to the board, it might be to the public. PLCs are shared leadership at its essence with a focus, as you guys have done a great job of framing out tonight. We could not have meaningful PLCs with a focus if you had not provided us the late start time two years ago, every Wednesday for our PLCs to meet. And so, we want to thank you for that because we would not be where we're at right now without the time to do that within the school day. And as you recall, we were able to work together and do that without taking any instructional time away over the course of the week from what we were previously doing when we did not as many late starts. So, we want to thank the board because you've been a part of this journey with us as well. Great job tonight, guys.
Good job. Yeah, very well done. Okay. All right, President's Report. You know what? I will just mention one thing. We had the Ed Red Dinner last Monday, which I thought was quite good. They changed the format a little bit. I mean, as many of you know, if you've been there, they usually have an invited speaker that comes and talks. I know they had a couple of years ago Jim Edgar and they usually get other oftentimes political people that speak. After multiple years in a row, usually speaking about the condition of things in Springfield, they had a refreshing change and actually did two things. They showed a really nice video of how they're implementing technology in a couple of different schools. And then they had a panel of, I think about five students roughly, five or six, anywhere from middle school on up to high school. And the moderator asked them questions about technology in their classroom and, you know, they talked a lot about using iPads in their classrooms and using Chromebooks in their classroom and using Google Docs and sharing Google Docs and all. It was really exciting to see. And I think, especially there was this one, one kid, I think it was in like fifth grade or something. And just to see his excitement about the technology and how he was using it and all that, it was really great, very well done. So, it was a nice session. They were actually inspired why there's still quite a few people there and I thought they did a really nice job to change it up and do something a little bit different. So, I think that also supports all the good things that we're doing on the technology side. I think it's important we continue to do that. I always love to see how the younger kids especially, they just get so engaged. And I remember a couple of years ago, we were challenged with some of our technology things and we spend money on that and all that. And I remember talking to the one person saying, "But that's what gets the kids motivated to learn. Give them a device." And it was really great to just kind of hear it directly from them. All right? Anything else you guys want to say about that? All right, student, school board reps. Grace, I know you've got a lot of reading to do, so. By the way, if you, if you, I'm sure you can get a copy of the video, it'll be out on YouTube, all that type of stuff about your teacher.
All right, so I represent Vernon Hills, as you know. I'm going to start with sports. Palms took home second in state this weekend, which was very exciting. Cheer took second at sectionals, they'll be going to state next weekend. Bowling is doing very well. The JV girls bowling team won the Prairie Lake Tournament recently and all teams of, all across the board are doing very well. Boys basketball recently won the Ridge Crown Tournament while girls basketball is also doing very well, charging along. The Special Olympics basketball team qualified for the state tournament in March, which is very exciting. That covers across Libertyville and Vernon Hills. Moving on to student activities, we recently had the blood drive and everyone was very willing to give and it was a wonderful thing to be a part of. Right now, we are planning our cold party, which stands for, "Come on, let's dance." And basically, it's like a casual turnabout. I know Libertyville loves their turnabout, but we're trying something new this year, so we'll see if it works. For fine arts, this happened a while ago, but the meeting was canceled in January. Theater Fest was like one of the best weekends of my young life and I just wanted to say, you know, representing the whole theater department, thanks for letting us do that because I know it comes at a bad time, but wow, what a great weekend. For all state, we sent six choir students, seven band students, and six orchestra students making 19 in all, which is a big number. They all learned so much and they really, it's one of the experiences everyone looks forward to each year. The Winter Play is next weekend, the 13th, 14th, and 15th. It is the musical Comedy Murders of 1940, which is the name of the, and I'm in it, I barely remember the name. And the miscellaneous, thanks for the cold days, those were really nice. And then, as a senior, I guess everyone right now is kind of like figuring out their plan, like more people are, you know, deciding where they're going to college, we're all finding roommates. I found a roommate. I don't know, it was the most bizarre experience, like finding roommates. It's like online dating, it's so bizarre. But, so that's Vernon Hills, thank you.
Imagine, imagine what it was like when you showed up to your dorm for the first day and you met your roommate for the first time. There was no, there was no mixing and matching.
Oh, God, wow. So.
And was it the theater event that I saw on TV the other day that showed the Uganda video? Was that, what was that event?
Was that the Variety show?
Maybe that's what it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was great. I loved watching all the people, all the kids in Uganda, "Go, Coop, go." They were talking, I was saying, that was awesome.
Okay, so for Libertyville, our Palms team took sixth in state, which everyone's very excited about. Our cavalry concert for choir is this Wednesday, so we're just tuning up what we need to do. Girls and boys basketball, each of our C teams have the opportunity to play at the Bradley Center in Milwaukee this Saturday, which is a really cool experience and we're all looking forward to that. And then, we casted Godspell, so that's our musical for the fall, or the winter, so we're looking forward to that. And then, girls bowling is doing really well.
And then, the other bowling thing, we had one bowler make it to state, Jack Bommerick's name was one of my friends. He got 45th, but he said his best game was a 279, which I don't think I've ever beat on Wii bowling. So, that's really impressive. And then in terms of academic clubs, we're kind of in a lull right now because state's coming up, a lot of competitions are winding down. But I remember last year, Dr. Scott, maybe a couple others, we just had a MATA U N conference assignment, or Chicago International MATA U N, at the Fairmont Hotel in Chicago. What a fantastic hotel, but it was a really fun conference, probably my favorite one that we go to every year. And I think you guys came to it last year. It was a big success this year. We had one best delegate award in the club and two outstanding delegates. And it's an international conference, a huge conference, so that's pretty big. And then next weekend, we get to go to DC for Georgetown's conference, Nieman North American Invitation to MATA U N. And that's the biggest conference in the country. So, that one's really exciting and we're all excited for that. We're taking 12 kids. And then debate, the same weekend we had the MATA U N conference, the last weekend when we had the cold days. By the way, the cold days, coming off of a weekend of MATA U N, did catch up on school work, very nice, very nice. But we had debate tournament that weekend too. We had a little bit of difficulty at that one because it was hosted at Sandberg High School, which is like a perennial power in debate. We only had one junior named Unker Rustogi, he got a speaker award, sixth speaker, but other than that, our debate team is prepping for state coming up in March. And then math team, we have regionals coming up on the same weekend as turnabout. And we have a, tomorrow morning, actually, we have a national competition, the American Mathematics Competition, in our cafeteria for an hour and a half. So, that's going to be a blast. And then Grace said they have cold, we have turnabout coming up. So, our theme that we chose is Hollywood. So, we're going to have like themed days for that, each class gets a hallway to decorate. Another seniors, we chose Star Wars, so we get a Star Wars themed hallway. So, that's our theme and we're just prepping for that turnabout. Court voting started today, so we have an official turnabout and we choose 16 boys to be on a turnabout court. And then out of that 16, we choose one to be a turnabout king. So, we do homecoming queen, turnabout king. And we have, our voting for the top 16 started today, so that's, that's exciting.
Nice. I think it's good that you're kind of doing your own thing, actually. I think that's, I mean, I really think that's one of the things that is a strength of the district. I mean, to the extent that it makes sense to do things the same, I think we do that, but to the extent that you want to have your own special personality, I think that's a great, great thing. So, I commend you guys for doing what you think you had to do to make it work.
It could be a total disaster.
Yeah, you know what? If you don't, if you don't try, if you don't try, you'll never know. So, I mean, really, I don't say that lightly. I give you guys a lot of credit for trying something different and, you know, probably also trying to be inclusive in a little different way because sometimes I think the formal dances are not for everybody. And so, I give you a lot of credit for that, I really do. Okay? All right. Thank you. Dr. Lee, Superintendent's Report.
More good news. LHS and VHHS were once again named to the U.S. News and World Report Best High Schools list for 2014. Among the 667 Illinois high schools reviewed, only 138 made the rankings. In Illinois, VHHS is 19th and received gold medal status while V-LHS is 20th and receives silver medal status. In the national rankings, VHHS ranked 485th and LHS 503rd among the 21,035 high schools in the United States. The U.S. News rankings are based on several factors, including student-to-teacher ratio, college readiness based on the percentage of seniors who were tested and passed advanced placement exams, and mathematics and reading proficiency based on junior year performance on the Illinois Prairie State Achievement Exam. So, percentage-wise, that puts us roughly in the top 3% in Illinois and the top 2% in the entire United States. Congratulations, Ellen, and congratulations, Marina. Great job. Senior Doug Millar was named the winner of this year's Sons of the American Revolution Outstanding Good Citizenship Award for VHHS. Senior Megan Derrig was named this year's winner of the Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizens Award for LHS. LHS junior Lauren Williams earned the highest possible composite score of 36 on the ACT College Admission and Placement Exam. D-128 Director of Community Education Diane Phillips was elected to the GLMV Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, continuing a long tradition started by Mary Tadrick in this district and followed up by Nancy Shipley of someone from the district serving on the chamber board. The LHS Jazz Ensembles I and II finished third in their respective divisions at last month's North Shore Jazz Festival. The Bell and Blank Centers, Mary Buxman's Scanlon Visual Arts Program serves as the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Region at Large Midwest affiliate with the Alliance for Young Artists and Writers. In December 2013, LHS and VHHS students were among the artists and writers in grades seven through 12 from the region at large who submitted over 3,100 art entries and 1,500 writing entries to the 2014 competition. 29 District 128 students received a total of 57 awards in the competitions. Students honored in the competitions were, in the competition were, from LHS, Madeline Lynch, Danielle Molnar, Cecilia Serb, Bennett Furman, Cassidy Motahari, Gabriela Munoz, Megan Ramirez, Caroline Schwarm, Taylor Zelik, Erica Ayagi, Kelly Bryant, Krista Erlenson, Natalie Chow, Alicia Cafaro, Madeline Burns, Hannah Anderson, Alicia Christopherson, Ellen Kinston, Kate Jurecki, Ryland Williams, Amari Williams, Taylor Morris, Caitlin Reynolds, and Kat Worden. From VHHS... From VHHS, Katie McLaughlin, Hannah Friedman, Cassandra Sandroval, Anne Ho, and Reggie Castro. Twenty-nine District 128 students were selected for the Illinois Music Educators All-State Ensembles. Students rehearsed and performed with a guest conductor and other students from across the state, January twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. Being selected at the IMEA State Festival is the highest individual honor that a student can receive as a high school musician. Congratulations to LHS students Megan Yum, Jane Recker, Jessica Jacob, Ingrid Reed, Lucia Zhang, Emma Coulterman, Tim Johnston, Alex Mills, Keith Wilson, and Micah Brand. And VHHS students Scott Bass, Alyssa Cha, Stephen Cha, Suzie Chen, Helen Ding, Mark Adler, Delilah Hatabovic, Christian Hughes, Bobby Kneer, Hayden Moffett, Justin Song, Steven Steinhyster, Victoria Steigerwald, Mona Storino, Sam Varan, Tyler Walls, Kalina Yang, Stephen Zhang, and Alice Zhang. LHS seniors Ellie Boujack and Emily Prey, and VHS, VHHS senior Rachel Jacoby were named to the 2014 Lake County Daily Hero Leadership Team. The leadership team recognizes high school students who excel in volunteerism and community service. VHHS senior Grace Farolo was named an honorable mention to the team, congratulations. The following students received the December Cougar Class Act Award. Matthew Posco, Jenna Kelly, Jeremy Gonzalez, Noah Melcher, Michael Mariella, Cheyenne Sau, Nicole Spence, Paola Arana, Jessica Nie, Naveen Thomas, and Priyanka Gupta. The District 128 Special Olympics Storm White Team advanced to the state basketball tournament after defeating Hershey High School in the area basketball tournament. Members of the Storm White Team that will compete in the state tournament in Bloomington on March fourteenth through sixteenth are Eduardo Aguilar, John Servie, Chris DeRose, Austin Josenhans, Vince Locochi, Corey Truger, Nick Zakari, and Trevor Furman. LHS senior Monica Gill took first place in the 2013-14 Illinois Music Education Association Student Composition Contest. The name of her winning composition submitted in the commercial popular category is "The Eyes That Saw a Thousand Ships." District 128 students competed in the National Chinese Essay Exam, and were recognized for their excellent performance. At VHHS, Grace Gao and Jeffrey Zhang both placed in the third highest performance category nationwide, receiving certificates of honorable mention. Karen Liu and Jessica Lauber placed in the second highest category, and received certificates for the Silver Apple Award. Jessica Nie placed in the top category and received the Golden Apple Award Certificate. At LHS, Melanie Ching and Anne Hong received the Golden Apple Award. Aldrin Alvarez and Lucy Zing received the Silver Apple Award. And David Black, Kimber Garland, and Colin Shu received third place. LHS students represented the United Kingdom in the Chicago International Model United Nations Conference held January twenty-third through the twenty-sixth. Juniors Haley Schuler and Shannon Roach won Outstanding Delegates in NATO. Senior Gordon Schlicht won Outstanding Delegate in the International Court of Justice. And Joey Nedlin and Jojo Amder won Best Delegates in the 1971 Commonwealth of Nations. So congratulations to all of our students, and obviously, once again, we're on a roll, so, great job. Next up on the superintendent's report, the board will note in their packet that we had four FOIA requests. And number three from the superintendent this evening is, we have reached a point in the year that we were required to do the semi-annual review of closed session minutes under five ICL, IC, ILCs, one-twenty slash two, C twenty-one. After a thorough review of the closed session minutes, it is the recommendation of the administration that we keep all of the minutes closed at this point. And if you concur with that recommendation, then we have no need to go into closed session this evening, we can simply vote to keep them closed at this time.
For that, for that issue?
For that particular issue, yes.
I make a motion that we accept the administration's recommendation and keep those minutes closed.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bratschek?
Aye. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Next up, is we have some exciting news this evening. After an extensive recruiting process and interview process, we are recommending tonight that Joe O'Brien be hired as a new assistant principal at Vernon Hills High School. Many of you know Joe through his previous roles as the union president in District 128. He is one of our outstanding teachers and innovators in the district. He has recently served, for the past couple of years, as Social Studies Department Chair at Libertyville High School, and has continued to distinguish himself. And Joe did a great job, as did the other candidates in the interview process. And we're very excited to accept John's recommend, John Gilliam's recommendation that Joe join the administrative team, and we'll do a reception for Joe before the next board meeting. So, Ellen, I don't, John's left, I don't know if you wanna make any comments about Joe?
Yeah, you just, you know, with the interview process, he's done a great job, he was a teacher in our building. He really went to Libertyville, got some really nice experience, and did a fantastic job leading the Social Studies Department at Libertyville. And we're just real proud of the work that he's done, and that he can stay within our district, and move up within our district. And we're real excited about him joining the team.
Marina?
Yeah, we've seen great growth in the Social Studies Department, and he's been a leader of leaders on our leadership team, too. He's such a great example, he always has great ideas, speaks freely, and just has a great wealth of experience. So, we hate to see him go, but we're glad he gets to work in that capacity.
That'd be great, great addition to the leadership team, another great addition to the leadership team. So, it is our recommendation that we appoint Joe O'Brien as the new assistant prin, as the new assistant principal for curriculum and instruction at Vernon Hills High School.
Your motion?
Um.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Batson?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bratschek?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. One other thing, a couple of other things under other tonight. First of all, both buildings, since we've met the last time, have gone through their freshman orienta, incoming freshman orientation programs. And it's always a great pleasure for me to be in the two buildings, and to have a very small part in the program. But it's more exciting just to walk around and listen to parents and students talk when they come into the two buildings. The programs so meet the needs of the communities that they serve. And the buzz at the two high schools those evenings is absolutely incredible. Particularly from students that have not had siblings go here before. Students are integrally involved in the presentations, and in the evening, and I think they always showcase our school so well. But Marina and her team, and Ellen and her team, just do an incredible job. And once again, the conversation from the community is just so overwhelmingly positive, and there's so much excitement about the kids just wanting to be at Vernon Hills and Libertyville High School. So, great job to both of you and your team, that's a tremendous amount of work that they both do, but it just pays great dividends, and really reflects the great culture of both of the buildings in the district, it was a really fun evenings.
I'm curious, Paris, do you do this undercover boss disguise?
Well, Marina tried to have me do that when my first daughter started at Libertyville, but that, that doesn't work, because she makes me come up on stage, so. I will tell, I will tell you this year, I have an eighth grader that will be going to Libertyville next year, and for the first time, we used prompter software at Libertyville High School, and so we didn't stand behind a podium. And they were able to use monitors, and we were able to read off screens in the first row, and kinda move back and forth. And so, when I came home that, my daughter was very excited, like everyone else, and when I came home that evening, she said, "Hey, did you memorize what you said tonight?" And I said, "No," and she said, "Well, did you use those things like President Obama uses?" And I said, "Yeah, but not nearly as nice." And she said, "Dad, you were really good." So, I didn't think I was that good, but that was, that was nice, but they did a great job, so.
I had a teacher email me the next day, this is a funny compliment, I guess. He came up to the activity table where this teacher was working as a coach, and said, "You know, I was planning on texting that whole time, and I had to take my phone out once." It was a compliment.
Was there like the light show in the auditorium weekend?
A little bit, but not quite as big.
It was big, we were, it was a huge light show.
A little, but.
And Vernon Hills always brings students up on the stage to participate, Grace was part of that, and you guys always do such a good job. It's kinda demonstrating your first year in high school, and it's, it's, the programs are different, and they're both very, very cool. So, we need to make special mention of that, because entire teams of people in the building were to get those programs ready, so, really great job. The other thing I wanted to mention under other tonight, as we meet in our rescheduled meeting tonight, Mayor Weppler is hosting the first of three community forums in Libertyville concerning the Brainerd referendum, which will run in March. I wanna compliment the mayor, Kevin Bowens, and the folks in the village for their work in attempting to get very accurate information out to the citizens of Libertyville. Our position remains that we're supportive of the Brainerd Community Group being able to repurpose that building, but the voters will need to make a decision, and then, we also wanna remind our public tonight that when the referendum runs, the village trustees still have to vote to implement the referendum. So it's an advisory referendum, it's a non-binding referendum. So the trustees will have to make a decision if the referendum pass, passes. Pat and I, between the two of us, will try and cover the next two meetings, we would've been there tonight, of course, except we had to reschedule our meetings. But we have provided the mayor with some architect mock-up boards based on some of the plans that we've talked about for the Brainerd property, if the property was to come, if the buildings and property were to come back to us. We all believe that it was important that the taxpayers knew how that property would be repurposed if the referendum failed. So, I'm sure we'll have some more information from some news stories tomorrow night. And the village has been very appreciative of the work that Pat has done on behalf of the board behind the scenes in terms of networking and working with them, and also the cooperation of the entire board and the administration as we've worked together to really ask an important question for the community, and the community will respond to that question. And then we will see where we go from there as part of our overall capital planning. So Pat, I don't know if you wanted to say?
No, I would second that, I've been real impressed with how open they've been, how transparent they wanna be, how they're reaching out to the community in a number of different venues to try to make sure that everybody is just fairly educated with what all the options are, and then, and then they'll let the voters decide. But, you know, Terry and Kevin, both in particular, have been fantastic, I think, to work with. You know, it's actually, I'm always really impressed with the good work and relationship we have with both villages. And I think that's something that's really come a long way over the years, is that fair?
Yes, absolutely.
And that's good, they've been really great.
Okay, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. Anybody from the public who would like to speak? All right, let's see, next, the consent vote agenda is listed, was reviewed in committee, in the committee meetings last month. If I could ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed, please.
So, Lou?
Second.
Any discussion? Not roll call, please.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bratschek?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next, Programming and Personnel Committee, Chairperson Mauer.
Okay, we first have board policies, second readings and adoptions of the eight policies that are listed. Are there any questions about those, they're the same as last time, so we just need a motion to approve those.
So, Lou? Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bratschek?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Okay, next we have educational tour request for Vernon Hills High School, trip to Washington.
Further tour requests is requested?
Second.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bratschek?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
And lastly, we have, we need a motion to approve the employment of employees as listed, those got to us too late for the committee meeting last month.
I move to approve the employment of employees as listed.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bratschek?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
That concludes the Programming and Personnel Committee.
Great job, thank you. Facilities and Finance Committee, Chairman Batson.
Thank you. We have two items. The first one is a recommendation for the 2014 Libertyville High School Yearbook Contract.
I make a motion that we approve the LHS Yearbook Contract.
Second.
Any discussions or conversations? Just as a word of note, this is a multi-year contract, and they're retaining the same fee structure for multiple years, so it makes sense to continue this, as long as they're willing to do that without any increase, so.
Need a roll call? Roll call?
Bratschek?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer? Aye.
And then the second item is a final payment related to a contract with Lake Shore for trash removal. I don't know if you have some?
This was our infamous little issue last year.
It was, and since we presented it to you about a year ago, we've had ongoing conversations with both Lake Shore and FEM, and Mr. Milliman has been involved in it, so just on the go.
Yeah, just as, by way of refreshing your memory, there was a trash contract that was bid out. FEM was the low bidder, but they're really a broker, they hired Lake Shore to do the work. The bid, which Jess verified, included tonnage. Lake Shore apparently didn't get on the same wavelength with FEM, so they were expecting to be paid more than the contract. And when that came to head last April, we terminated the contract with FEM. Lake Shore provided services which included the tonnage, and they were paid for that. But they still wanted to get paid for the work they had done earlier, and included the tonnage. We offered to pay them six-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy dollars, which was about half of what they were claiming. And they initially rejected that, saying they wanted more from FEM. FEM then went bankrupt, and they continued to ask us for money. So we met a few weeks ago, had a conference call with their representative, and I think they're willing to take that if it's still on the table. I told them we would have to come back to the board and address that with you. So this was no different than what you offered in May, and we're just asking you to affirm or not affirm that you're still willing to do that.
And can you remind me, how did we arrive at that number?
It's basically half of what they had said they were entitled to. We looked at the contract, I looked at the contract, and said, you know, based upon the bidding parameters and what we had, Jess had confirmed, you know, that probably wasn't in the contract, but in order to settle it, you know, that you would pay that. Frankly, tonnage probably is a standard to be paid, so this was a little unusual, which is why Jess made the call to FEM to confirm that their bid included the tonnage. And, you know, I think it makes sense to get it out of the way and move it along.
Okay, and I apologize, I just don't remember, what have we done since then, are we, are we using Lake Shore?
We have a bidder, and the company that's providing us the service, and that service was, the winner was selected through a bidding process.
And it's not Lake Shore then, right?
No.
Okay.
They were close, but they didn't.
Yeah, okay, 'cause I know they had hoped that we'd get it, but, okay. All right, any other questions on that, then? So you need a, a motion for us to authorize payment at this point? Or assume, I mean, you, you just wanna, are you just looking for a?
Yeah, I think a motion to authorize the final payment of six-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy is in order.
All right, so, motion to authorize payment, why don't we say not to exceed six-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy dollars?
Fine.
Okay.
So, Lou?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Bratschek?
And we're actually going to get, the data, the best data will come from SEDOL, is going to come from SEDOL on that when they do their analysis, because that, this is a legal proceeding at this point. And so, excuse me, that data will have to be presented as part of that legal proceeding, the impact on all the member districts.
And like, like ZERK pulls out and still uses them and they pay, you know, just an